Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I'll call to our McHenry County Board regular meeting of October 15th, 2024. And Ms. Greenow will lead us in the pledge today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation this evening, we have Pastor John Titus from Calvary Assembly of God in Crystal Lake. Or not. Okay, seeing none. Lou, would you like to lead us?
Let us be present to the blessings that each of us bring into this meeting, our gifts of wisdom, patience, and discernment, our ability to hear beyond our own hearts into the hearts of others. And we ask the Creator to keep us wise and keep us kind, keep us focused as we work on behalf of all of the citizens of McHenry County. And may we be safe and well as we leave this place and go to our homes tonight, remembering the grave responsibility that we carry on behalf of those who put us here. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Althoff. Campbell. Gattamuller. Greenow. Hendricks. Kaminski. Kearns. Conkle. Meshes. Ness. Reinert. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Wegner.
All but one present and the other is remote.
Having a quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Shorten to attend remotely. Mr. Scala makes a motion. Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor, say aye. Against, welcome Mr. Shorten. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Scala makes a motion. Mr. Kaminski seconds. All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Scala makes a motion. Ms. Ness seconds. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Good evening, everyone. I have a handful of items to report to the county board. This evening, we're putting the McHenry County draft budget for 2025 on 30-day review before we vote on it at our November 19th meeting. Thank you to County Administrator Pete Austin, Chief Financial Officer Carrie Wise, Finance and Audit Committee Chairman Mike Scala, and as always, all of our countywide elected officials and department heads working with us to help craft a responsible budget. Yesterday, I spoke before the Illinois House Public Transit Working Group, which was created by House Speaker Chris Waltz to look more closely at the state public transit system and provide recommendations on how it can better serve the communities like ours that rely on it. I took this opportunity to make our positions clear when it comes to any proposed regional transit reform. And speaking of transportation, earlier today, county communications staff posted the newest video in the McHenry County Rise and Thrive video series we're doing in partnership with the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation. This video features MCEDC CEO Mark Picos and our Assistant Director of Transportation Scott Hennings discussing McHenry County's modern road infrastructure network and everything it offers to businesses looking to locate or expand here. I encourage you to visit McHenry County Government's YouTube page and check these videos out. And finally, this evening, this is our last meeting before the November 5th election. Thank you to every candidate who had stepped up to run and serve the public, and thank you to our county clerk's office for their hard work and diligence in ensuring that every county resident who wants to vote has ample and convenient means to do so. And that concludes my report. Do any members have comments tonight? Ms. Ness.
I would like to remind county board members that November 11th, we will have our second McHenry County Veterans Day in front of the Administration Building. It will be at 11 o'clock. We invite you all to join us as we honor the members and we close off the Green Light Event for Veterans, so.
Mr. Reinert.
Thank you. Just a... Thought I'd share this, that the McHenry County Conservation District has a ride with their motorcycle police force throughout the county conservation department's properties Sunday at 9:00. I'll be going there with a couple of friends to join their ride. I think there are some open ones if anybody cares to go. Also, as a home builder, I am working on, currently I thought I'd share with everyone, the architectural plans for a workforce house that we're hoping to build for a gentleman who is trying to help his son build a house in Crystal Lake. There are two other builders that are pricing this house out, and we're going to see if with all these codes, one can build a house, still make money, and sell it to a young working family. So I'll keep everybody posted. As for the energy codes, we're working with a couple senators that I have a relationship to see if they can address these new energy codes that call for 2x8 construction homes that would basically put these houses out of the market. And also, the realtors that I work with, their people in Springfield are also trying to lobby to see if they can do anything to relax these unnecessary codes. So I'll keep everybody posted on that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Sager.
Thanks, Chairman. I just want to say a quick thank you to our county clerk, Joe Tirio, and his staff. I had the chance to place my votes at the new center, and I think that you all should be commended for the exceptional facility that is there on one hand, but secondly, the individuals that were manning the day, as it were, did an exceptionally fantastic welcoming job and very, very courteous. So commendation and thank you.
Ms. Wegner.
Thank you. As has been stated, it's election season, and there is a lot of misinformation flying around, so I hope that we as a board can stay away from any misinformation and false narratives so we can get down to the county's business and make our decisions based on factual information. So on that note, in the past two election cycles, there have been ridiculous rumors about photo fraud in our county, and, sorry, in our country. And these rumors have been even more widely spread in the past month or two, and I know that our county clerk takes their job seriously and wants to ensure that we have free and fair elections. And I've had a lot of people asking me, what's the process for counting mail-in ballots? Because they send them in, they get an email or a text saying they've been submitted, but they don't know the process afterward. And they want to make sure that their vote will count toward the voting totals. So I was in communication with Clerk Tirio that I would ask him if he would be able to give an overview tonight in a recorded public meeting on how the mail-in ballot process works. I know people are tuning in online also to be reassured that their ballots will be processed correctly so their vote will count. So whenever you have time in the agenda, thank you, Mr. Tirio, for informing the public about the process.
Mr. Beeler, it's your pleasure. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Wegner, and thanks for the advance notice. I was able to put together some visual aids as well for what it's worth. To Mr. Sager's point, that those are our election judges, and they are a point of pride. This is not something that you hear a lot about, but just as an indication, in 2020, McHenry County was the only, as far as I know, collar county that opened all of its polling places and opened on time during the pandemic. So, and that is our election judges 100%, and so a great deal of thanks goes to them. But to ballot security, and especially vote-by-mail ballot security, which has a lot to do with our election judges. First of all, it starts with the application. So when you apply for a vote-by-mail ballot in McHenry County, we require that you do that in such a way that requires a signature. That's different than many other counties where they will allow you to do it online and fill out a form online. We want to see your signature. We're going to compare your signature to the signature that we have on file, and this prevents maybe a candidate who's aggressive from requesting ballots on somebody's behalf for someone who may not want a ballot. Every delivery of ballots that comes to the election center, whether that's by mail or by Dropbox, is logged with the quantity, the source of those ballots, and in the case of ballots from a Dropbox, there's a numbered security seal, and that also is logged. No ballot is accepted for tabulation if it is not collected along with its certification envelope. So you hear stories of people having a truckload of ballots show up, and people shove them in the Dropbox. If you shoved your naked ballot in the Dropbox, we would keep it because we keep literally everything, but it would not be tabulated if it had been estranged from its fully validated and signed certification envelope. So when we get those envelopes, and I brought in a test envelope, this is one that we use for setup and testing and calibration. So this is what might come back in the mail, and it is addressed to PO Box 11. So we changed our address from 2200 to PO Box 11 to help separate the mail both at the post office and for our mail handlers. It has inside of it, and this outer envelope is generic. We keep it nonetheless because in some cases, somebody may put their return address on there, and if there is ever a reason why we had to go back to find this, that would give us a means to do that. This is the certification envelope. You can't see maybe from where you're sitting, but it says "test" here, so this is very close to what an actual certification envelope has on it. And the things to see are that it has a barcode on the front, and that barcode identifies not only the voter but this particular issuance of this ballot. So let's say, Ms. Van Hoff, you call us and you tell us, "My dog literally ate my ballot, and I need a new one." It could happen, you know, it gets hungry. And we will mark this as voided, so maybe if you weren't telling the truth and your dog didn't really eat it, if somebody tried to use this ballot again, it would not be allowed to pass. And then we would actually go back to you, and you and I and the state's attorney probably be having some sort of conversation. And that's not a joke. There's actually, we have somebody who tried to vote twice, and we're working through that as we speak. In addition to that, it's got a signature block, and it reminds you to seal your envelope, and then inside you would find the ballot that, of course, just says "Vote Joe" on it. But it wouldn't just say that, obviously. But, so when this comes to the office, you may have seen the machine that we call Big Al, which is a mail sorting machine, and some of you who came and saw that. We take these and we run this through there, and the first time we run it through there, it takes a picture of the whole front, and then it takes like a second, crops out that signature block, and it stores that for a moment. It then separates them by township grouping, and it also measures them. Everyone is measured for height, width, and thickness. So if somebody tried to produce a ballot envelope that was not original, if they tried to put something else or something more than a ballot in there, it would be rejected and then examined manually. It also is compared, that barcode again, is compared to see if it's been voided or if that voter has voted already, in which case it is also rejected. But if it's not, then it is set aside and put in color-coded bins, and we put that aside, and we take that data, and we do a couple things. The picture on the front goes to election judges, and every signature is validated by a human being or more than one human being in McHenry County. Some jurisdictions use AI to determine if the signature is real. We use old-fashioned human beings for every signature. A signature cannot be invalidated or challenged, to use the proper terminology, unless three people from both parties agree that it is not the right signature, at which point its setup is challenged, and there is a letter that's being triggered to the voter to allow them to cure that challenge. If that voter has signed up for ballot tracks, they will also get a notification by whatever means that they chose to do so. So they'll probably get that before they get our letter. They'll get that within 24 hours typically. Excuse me. The judges will make their decision and mark their disposition in our system, and they'll do this without ever actually touching the ballot. The ballot is sitting safely somewhere else, and it's been accounted for. So we also are going to send via ballot tracks a signal that says, "We've received your ballot," and we're basically considering its signature at this point. So the judges give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I take that same bunch of ballots, I send it through Big Al again, and in this case, it knows the disposition of the signature verification. And if it's been rejected, it's sorted out into the different rejection types, and if it's been approved, it gets sorted out into township groupings. The rejections are set aside for the voters to cure if they are so inclined. And then the ones that have been approved are set aside in different color-coded bins, whereupon the judges will come back in. They will remove the ballot from inside the certification envelope. They will bunch those into parcels of 25, clip them together, put them in a box. That box will be logged with who counted them, how many are in that box, and they'll be given a numbered seal. Those sealed numbered boxes go on a rack specially marked for ballots that are ready to be scanned. At some point between now and Election Day, we will scan those ballots into the tabulators. They aren't counted. They are merely scanned, and we store that data until after the close of polls on Election Day. Once that's been done, as they come out of the tabulator, they are again accounted for. They are put in boxes very similar to the same ones in parcels of 25, logged again, sealed again. Those seals also log, and they will remain there for up to 22 months after the election unless someone is called to open those for a challenge of some sort or that sort of thing. Trying to see if I missed anything. I think that's, I mean, without going into a whole 30-minute dissertation in it, that's it in a thousand, maybe not a thousand words or less. One of the great things about the new election site and what some of the voters have really found interesting is now that we have glass and you can look and see, and they'll ask me, "What are those guys doing?" Well, they're looking at the signatures. Those people are running the ballots. These people are doing training, you know, that sort of thing. So that has certainly been literally more transparent. Any questions? That was very fast, but.
And how many vote-by-mail and early voting have we had so far?
So as of this morning, it was a little over 14,000, a little over 10,000 vote-by-mail, and around 4,000 by early voting. Had a very busy day early voting. I didn't get an end-of-day count, and we're expecting a lot of mail tomorrow, so it's been brisk.
Good. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Okay, proceed to special recognition. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation designating the importance of manufacturing to our community and declaring October as National Manufacturing Month in McHenry County. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Meshes seconds. Mr. Scala will read the proclamation.
Proclamation designating the importance of manufacturing to our community and declaring October as National Manufacturing Month in McHenry County. Whereas National Manufacturing Month highlights the vital role of manufacturing in our economy, showcasing rewarding high-skill job opportunities and encouraging community engagement throughout October. And whereas McHenry County boasts a diverse range of national and international manufacturers across multiple sectors, significantly contributing to our workforce and economic vitality. And whereas McHenry County is dedicated to supporting and promoting manufacturing growth through strategic initiatives that foster expansion and retention within our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the McHenry County Board, Illinois, that we recognize October as National Manufacturing Month in McHenry County. And be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the county administrator dated at Woodstock, Illinois this 15th day of October 2024.
All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scala. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation honoring McHenry County veterans and affirming participation in Operation Green Light for veterans. Mr. Kaminski makes the motion. Ms. Ness seconds, and you will both participate in reading the proclamation.
Whereas today, McHenry County and its board stand together to honor the generations of Americans who have earned the title of veteran. Veterans swear an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies, both foreign and domestic, and have repeatedly put themselves in harm's way to fulfill this oath. It is our responsibility as recipients of this pledge to support and acknowledge the sacrifices veterans and their families have made in carrying out this oath, and...
Whereas countless Americans throughout history have given their lives in service to defend the Constitution and the founding principles of our country, and...
Whereas many veterans have suffered trauma and loss as a result of fulfilling the oath they took on Induction Day, be it through combat, the relocation of their families, or the loss of community, and...
Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans from November 4th through November 11th, 2024, to raise awareness of the unique challenges faced by many veterans and the resources available at the county, state, and federal levels to assist veterans and their families.
Now, therefore let it be proclaimed by this county board of McHenry County, Illinois, that the week of November 4th through November 11th, 2024, is Operation Green Light for Veterans Week, a time to honor the service, courage, and sacrifice of each veteran, service member, and their families, and to recognize the continued service veterans perform in our community and the challenges they face when transitioning from active duty to civilian life.
Be it further proclaimed that the observation of Veterans Day and Operation Green Light, McHenry County encourages its residents to recognize and honor all those in our community who have made immeasurable contributions and sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their business or residence, and...
Be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the county administrator and the McHenry County Veterans Assistance Commission.
Dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 15th day of October, AD 2024 or 23?
23.
Three.
No, 24.
24.
24.
Yeah, 24, my correction. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to give everyone that's sitting here a green light so they can have it. Sure. I will enter... All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to zoning petitions. Do any members have items they'd like removed from the zoning consent agenda? Ms. Von Bergen.
10A3.
Any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda, less item 10A3. Mr. Smith makes the motion. Ms. Althoff seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10A3. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Wegner seconds. Ms. Von Bergen, do you want to discuss?
Just real quickly, although I understand that the solar field is situated in an industrial area, and we are essentially required to approve all solar fields due to state mandate, I still remain concerned about the elevated contamination risk at this site, which is highlighted in the information provided in our packet. Also highlighted by NRCS is that 35% of the parcel has severe limitations for soil-anchored solar arrays. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
No.
Move on to public comment. Just a quick note, public comment is your opportunity to address the board. You'll be allotted three minutes in which to do so, at which time the red light will come on in front of me, and if you have not completed your statements, I would ask you to do so. First up, Mark Novak, followed by Bruce Johnson.
Hello, Chairman, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service. It's got to be a tremendous burden on you to balance this with family life and work, if you're working still. I just commend you for putting in the time to do this and manage this county. My wife and I moved here in 1998. We bought our first home in Crystal Lake, settling down here to raise a family. We have raised 19 foster kids, three of which we have adopted, put them all through public school, through grade school, middle school, high school. They all graduated. I have two kids in college now, and my son is a Navy veteran, was in the Gulf when they were taking the troops out of Afghanistan, so he was involved in that operation. We've moved out of that home in 2002, built another home across town in Crystal Lake here, which we paid for in cash. But it's gotten to the point now with the taxes and the economy the way it is, that we're contemplating the fact that we can't afford to live there anymore. Our taxes and insurance are equal to what our mortgage payment was when we first moved out here, and that's without any principal or interest. I'm a 40-year veteran of the printing industry. Ever since COVID, the printing industry has really, really suffered. We have a company that's surviving, but the wages are stagnating. I look back at my 40-hour check from two years ago and to what I'm paying home now and taking home back then, and I'm taking home $130 less a week, you know, just from increases in healthcare insurance. And the overtime is non-existent. I used to make a good portion of my living off the overtime. So the cost of goods and services, the inflation, it's just really killing us. And this new tax bill, when we got the increase last year, we were able to make the first payment, but still struggling to find ways to make the second payment. So I would encourage you not to raise the taxes. Actually, there's an option that would have a 3%, I believe, decrease in the cost of the taxes. I would say that anything that's less than or more than 00 is unacceptable to me, and we'll probably end up having to leave the county if the taxes get increased, leave the state even. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, followed by Rich Clements.
Good evening, Board. Thank you, Chairman Bueller, for allowing me to speak, and also thank you for allowing us to speak publicly before the vote is taken on the budget being considered. So at least at last week's Cowell meeting, I had a brief discussion in the lobby with our county administrator, Peter Austin, at which time he said I would not be looking at an 11% increase in my property tax bill because of the recent property tax assessments that were received last week. I think most everyone here received their assessments, correct? I thanked him for his concern and asked if he could help me understand how the adjustments are computed. He emailed me two videos that Mr. Alex Benitez, former chief county assessor, had shared in 2023 before the Cowell committees. It was very informative. It was good to see, you know, the big picture stuff. Additionally, Ms. Carrie Wise, CFO of McHenry County, has emailed me a summary of how the proposed budget options would affect my own property in Trout Valley, which was very helpful. It shows a range of savings going from between 17.42% down to 11.93%, depending on which of not five, but eight scenarios that the board has been presented. The difference in my property tax bill based on the ranges of scenarios is around $36.20. Not a big deal, right? We, the taxpayers, have been in the proverbial frog pot all of our lives since reaching adulthood. I love this county. It's been my family's home since 1988. Prior to that, we lived in Cook County and were weaned on the mentality that the fix was in in Illinois, and there wasn't anything we could do about it, whether it was about politics or taxes, don't bother. I don't believe that this is so in McHenry County. You, the board, have done an excellent job of operating within your means, being debt-free and having more than two times the reserves required. We, the taxpayers, would love to make these same claims. However, most cannot. Credit card debt is at an all-time high. Inflation over these past three years is off the hook. Interest rates have almost tripled. Home values have gone up 40% as well as my property taxes over the last four years. The shifting of the mental health tax burden from property tax to sales tax is costing my construction business at least a minimum of $500 additional this year in sales tax. So our tax burdens keep on increasing as the money just comes out of different pockets now. Board, you have the power to keep, you have the power to help every McHenry County citizen by saying no to any budget increase when in fact you should actually reduce the tax levy this year. So thank you for your consideration.
Rich Clements, followed by Rachel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity, and I just want to tell everyone else here that serves for McHenry County, you're all doing a great job, and you're very, we're very blessed to have you working for, or working with us and for us. One of the things I, I just wanted to bring up some points about, it's really the same thing, but it's just, you know, I wanted to bring up some points about the founding, you know, the founding fathers set up our government to, you know, they followed the blueprint that Jesus gave as church, the church leaders to follow, which is to, you know, be servant leaders. And most of the leaders I meet in this area are servant leaders. I'm not saying anybody isn't, but it's just, but he also taught the people to respect and honor their leaders, and leaders are worth double honor. So I've always lived by that, and he's also, but he also says not to take a leadership position too, you know, easily or lightly because leaders are, on Judgment Day, leaders are judged more harshly. You know, that's what God warned us about. So I just wanted to remind people of that. And then also, you know, God cares about his children, you know, his children. He wants them to have a good life. He wants them to be able to afford, to be able to make a good living and to live a good life. And America's been blessed with that for a long time. So God wants us to be, you know, more sensitive in the economic climate to what people are going through. You know, 44% of the constituents in this county are blue-collar farmers and service people, and a lot of the trade, there's a lot of tradespeople up here, which is, and the trades have really dropped off right now. It's very slow. You know, I grew up in a concrete contractor's home, and we, you know, the economy for tradespeople are like, it's like a yo-yo, you know? It's up and down, up and down. And, you know, people really struggle during those times. So it's something that, and I moved up to McHenry County because I was in Lake County, but their expenses got so high that I couldn't afford to live there, so I moved up to McHenry and bought some lots back in 80, or actually it was in 79, 79. And I, you know, I've always loved it up here, but it's just getting, it's getting expensive. And so there's people on the trades that are hurting, and there's elderly people...
Summarize your comments, please.
Okay, yeah, okay. So anyway, I just want to, you know, just encourage people to think that way, and it'd be really good if we could cut taxes instead of raising them. Okay? Thank you.
Rachel Johnson, followed by Mike Waneky.
Good evening, everyone. The Lord bless you all. Thank you for your faithful service and all the hours that you put in to serve our county and our people. We have very sweet, wonderful families and precious citizens of McHenry County. It's just a beautiful thing to me to go all throughout the county and just meet so many incredible families. I just wanted to encourage you all to let you know that as I've gone through the county and served people at food pantries and through different avenues, that there is just so much suffering economically right now. I have neighbors that just can't even hardly keep their, make their house payment with medical bills and everything. And my daughter and her, my son-in-law and my three grandchildren can't even afford to buy a home. So I just, it's like everywhere that I go, even at our church, we have families that are all just having to have to move in with each other because no one can afford to buy a home. My mom and dad moved out of Cook County in 1977 and moved our family of five at the time out to McHenry County. They raised 12 children in this county, and, you know, it is a beloved county to our family. I am so grateful for McHenry County, and I just want to encourage you guys to do everything that is in your power, especially right now. I know there are a lot of options and things that could be done, choices that could be made as far as improving different things, but right now, there are just so many families that are struggling just to survive. And so I just would encourage you all to take a very hard look at what is absolutely crucial to do right now as far as the budget goes, and maybe some things that could wait for a while until we get through this very difficult, high-inflation time. So thank you for hearing my comments, and thank you for serving us.
Mike Waneky.
Also Superintendent of the Veterans Assistance Commission. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank Chairman Bueller and the county board and the county of McHenry and its citizens for, again, observing Operation Green Light. Last year, I got some wonderful pictures from people who lit up their houses at night with the green lights in recognition of this, and I'm expecting to get more this year. Second issue I wanted to quickly address was I wanted to thank everybody in the county board, Chairman Bueller, and many of our department heads. Through the legal change that we had at the Veterans Assistance Commission, one perfect example of how everybody kind of helped out with us is, you know, policies is a daunting task. You got an entire group of department heads and people who were able to put the policies together and bring them all together so we have one set of policy in McHenry County. You just had one person doing it, and I plagiarized heavily on a lot of our department heads, especially HR, IT, or administration. And the end result was that set of policies was so good and so up to date because of all of you, that they were used as a template for all the other VACs in the county. So thank you very much, and I just wanted to come up and say how much we appreciate you and what you've done, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. For who checked the box, if anybody didn't check the box and would wish to speak, your opportunity now. Seeing none, we will move on to appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment to McHenry County hearing officer as of October 15th, 2024. Mr. Scholar makes the motion. Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, do any standing committee chairs or liaisons have updates for us today? Ms. Althoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm just reporting from the Fox Waterway. I thought you'd all like to know, again, 7,100 acres of waterway in McHenry County, and this year they sold stickers of $1.8 million. Lake County estimates that there's $120 million generated by those waterways in Lake County alone. We're working with them now to find out how they determined that figure, and we're going to steal that template and try and determine how much money comes in from that waterway to McHenry County and affect our revenues. So I just thought you might be interested in those reports. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Greenow.
Well, I was going to ask Scott if he could give us an update on the Ethics Commission because I haven't been able to attend.
Yes, be happy to do, she'd be happy to do so. Your Ethics Commission has been meeting regularly to review the ethics ordinance and look at some possible changes to recommend to the county board. They most recently met last past Thursday, and they completed a very thorough and comprehensive review of that ordinance. They are scheduled to meet again on November 20th, and at that time, it's anticipated they'll conclude their review and then present to the county board through Administrative Services Committee a series of recommendations to ordinance changes. When they have everything compiled, you'll of course receive a summary of those recommendations and changes along with a red line draft, but it's been a very diligent effort on behalf of your Ethics Commission going back to June, and they're looking forward to presenting their recommendations to you, and we'll work with county board chair Bueller on the timing of when it will come forward.
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Kearns?
So at the next transportation meeting, I know this has been on several people's minds and the townships that they've attended meetings, we will, it's on the agenda that we will have discussion on the private roads, the, and the non-dedicated subdivision roads for the motor fuel tax, to discuss that, a presentation will be made that day. Also, there'll be some other things on the agenda that board members might want to watch to attend. And on the Stormwater Commission, we met last month, we interviewed for five position candidates for the tech committee, and we had seven interviews, so, for five positions. So that appointments will be made in the next couple of weeks so that when we start the 25 term, the tech commission can start tearing into that stormwater ordinance as we've been trying to do. So they'll have a full-appointed board at that time and ready to go. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the routine consent agenda. Do any members have items they'd like removed from the routine consent agenda? Seeing... Ms. Wegner?
Sorry, I lost my page here. So I need to abstain from 16.b.2.3, and I also wanted to pull 16.b.1.1.
I'm staying from the other.
I can just mark the other.
Seeing no other items removed, I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda, less item 16.b.1.1. Mr. Scholar makes the motion. Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item 16.b.1.1. Mr. Scholar makes the motion. Mr. Sager seconds. Discussion, Ms. Wegner?
Thank you. This actually applies to 16.b.1.2 also, because, I apologize, the two resolutions on the consent agenda are pertaining to the Connect Illinois broadband expansion applications. In 2020, the county board added investment in broadband internet expansion to our strategic plan, and in 2021, the county board passed two resolutions for McHenry County to contract with HR Green to expand the public-owned fiber that ran from MCC to the city of Woodstock. So the focus on that was public-private partnerships and other government agencies, including the county applying for grants. I want to read part of the documentation from the resolution. The county and our consultant, H R Green, have identified additional grant opportunities for public-private partnerships and other government agencies who have an interest in this project. In Phase Two A of this project, H R Green will work with the county to create a business model for the partnership and facilitate and perform an open competitive process to identify, negotiate, and select a partner or partners who best meet the needs of the county. So H R Green, uh, the Phase One, we paid thirty-one thousand, and Phase Two, we paid sixty-three five hundred, uh, for both of those contracts. So close to a hundred thousand for the two contracts. Um, so I read the resolution. And then in December twenty twenty-two, there was a press release that said the county will aggressively seek funding for the expansion through the three hundred and fifty million dollars that Illinois has already allocated for broadband projects through the American Rescue Plan Act and the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act. So what this means to me is that the county was going to apply for the grants and, uh, look to invest in these grants and use the plan from H R Green to invest in broadband expansion through the county. Since March twenty twenty-two, we've received occasional updates, but since then, somehow the direction of the county's broadband expansion has changed. And if you look at the strategic plan, it now says the county administration is assisting private providers with grants and middles for Phase Three of the Connect Illinois Program. So to me, this is a change from the resolutions that we have passed since twenty twenty-one. The county should be working to provide a digital equity plan so all residents have access to affordable internet service. We all remember the families during COVID that had to sit in the parking lot of the library or the schools because they didn't have internet access. The lack of internet access also mostly affords those who can't afford it. The county should be involved in at least the planning and also requesting the federal grant dollars so we can ensure the broadband gets to the underserved areas. So I see two problems with these, this resolution. Um, first, we paid a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for, for contracts, for plans that seems to have changed. Well, since then, the direction of the county has changed. And we are not following through. The second is we're not following through on the initial resolution and discussions from the County Board. So I, I think we need to look what happened here and why the goals seem to have changed. Um, I will vote yes for this resolution, but I just needed a voice, um, that I think the county's going on a different, um, different direction than we had originally planned. I wanted the, the county should be investing so the underserved get internet and not just be relying solely on the private companies and what they will, um, what they will build for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish.
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. So move on to ordinances. We have two up for review. Mr. Hendricks?
I'd move to amend the, uh, annual appropriation for the levy to reflect the Scenario One presented by the county administration, reflecting a three percent cut.
You gotta speak into your mic. I can't hear you up here.
I'm moving to amend, uh, the, uh, budget levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to reflect Scenario One presented by the county administration, which reflects a three percent cut.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Kunkel seconds. Discussion? Mr. Gotamaller?
It's out of order. It's not for a board meeting to vote on today. He can have that motion in a month, but he can't do it today.
Okay. Point taken.
Why? If I may. Why would we not be able to amend what we're putting, uh, to change what's being reviewed?
Mr. Gotamaller?
It's not set on the agenda to make this decision tonight. It's set on the agenda to be open for public comment for the next thirty days. Public have a chance to weigh in on it, and then you can make any motion you want in the end of thirty days. But you can't make that motion today. It's not, it, it's a violation of the Meetings Act, candidly.
Okay, I'll accept that. Uh, we have two items up for, uh, action tonight. No other team?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not done. My mic's still showing.
Pardon me?
Uh, I'd, I'd then amend my motion or make a second motion, uh, to waive the thirty-day review period, uh, in order to reflect, uh, the change that I just presented. And that is allowed under four point one one of the, uh, County Board rules.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Kunkel? Discussion? Mr. Gotamaller?
I'd ask the state's attorney's office if we can waive the state statute.
Take a moment.
And, Mr. Chairman, while the state's attorney's reviewing that, I would be fine moving on to the other agenda items, and we can roll back to this.
Just wait.
Okay.
You can use it anytime.
You know, my Shanahan's.
This is still?
All day.
Nineteen sixty-seven prices?
State's Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and also what I was just telling Mr. Hendricks, uh, remember here, every single time that I've been here without Norm, you guys have presented a question to me. So thank you very much for doing that and putting me on the spot. Uh, I believe the county annual appropriations bill, thanks to Alicia who pulled it off for me very quickly, uh, I believe there's a fifteen-day waiting period. So I believe that that would be something that you'd be able to do tonight.
And, and does that include we wouldn't even be able to, um, I, I understand there's a fifteen-day review period, but we can't even amend the language of what's being reviewed?
Oh, that, that would be part of the, that would be part of the review process, would be determining ultimately what's going to be presented at the voting action meeting, if that makes any sense. So right, so right now, it's up for review. It's up to take public comment for that particular appropriation, for that ordinance. Uh, ultimately, between now and the actionable date, the scheduled dates, provided that there are fifteen days for that waiting period, that would be the time where you would ultimately put forward what's going to be on the voting agenda. And tonight is not that night.
Understood. Okay, so based on that, uh, we'll move on to, uh, items for action tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve item seventeen B one. Ms. Meshes makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, item seventeen B two. It's ordinance adopting establishment of altered speed zones on Main Street. Motion, Mr. Gotamaller, seconded by Ms. Althoff. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting's open. Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Ms. Van Hoff, have you yet to submit?
I didn't. Were you watching me?
Maybe. Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve item seventeen B three. It's the ordinance adopting, or adopting the establishment of altered speed zone on Ridgefield Road. Ms. Althoff makes the motion. Ms. Meshes seconds. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Shorten, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
Quickly, um, Jim, thank you for mentioning Transportation Committee. Eight fifteen, ten thirty, so October, you forgot to mention this building. So, okay, we're gonna be in this building in room A and B because we are expecting a little bit bigger crowd. So I'll just remember that. Um, I wanted to note, um, last Wednes, last Thursday, uh, last Thursday, yeah, well, it's almost a week and a half ago now. I was, I was gonna say this last Thursday, but we skipped over my comments on Thursday. So that was my point. Uh, a week and a half ago, um, Shalen and Mark Picos, uh, got together at the Edge Group. That's a group of municipal economic development professionals, uh, for the first time in, in quite a while. And they had a fantastic turnout. Um, really excited about that, and they're gonna be getting it together in January. Um, also, last week on Wednesday, MCC hosted their, uh, Manufacturing Industry Council Breakfast. Uh, remember, Scala had a, an opportunity to be there. Uh, Scott and I were there, a number of other staff members. Great turnout. Uh, just super exciting to, this was in the new Caddy Building. But to see the energy around manufacturing and the trades that's kind of building in the county, it's just really exciting. And I don't know, I'm being a little weird about it, but it was really cool. You know, one thing, and we're all concerned about residential property tax, but that, I think we all agree on that is a way to reduce residential property tax is get that, that base, uh, of, uh, commercial base growing in, in the trades mode. So that'd be fantastic. Um, we had some good discussion last Thursday about property valuation. Some good comments from residents about property valuation, some, some points that were raised. I think Ms. Meshes raised some about property valuation. Uh, Alex Benitez, wonderful video on property valuation and how it comes together as a piece of your property tax bill, but not the sole driver of your property tax bill. We've put that back on the front page of the website. So anybody, if you want to direct any of your constituents there, Sarah, tell them to take a look. Uh, and then finally, I'll note that this Saturday, we're having electronics, light bulb, battery, recycling here at the county. Um, and so direct your residents there. Got it? Thank you.
Mr. Saager?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, this is a request for just a privilege to make a final comment.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to extend my sincere gratitude to members of the public who addressed this body this evening with regards to the tax levy. I, I truly appreciate, uh, your most courteous, thoughtful, and heartfelt, uh, input. So thank you very much for your presence here this evening and your participation in our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye. Against?
Aye.
Have a good night.